Okay. We will call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, June 4th, 2019 at 6:00 PM.
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Pickley Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Item number two is there, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries and we have on agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Bill, would you like to lead up?
Sure.
We have public comments now, but I don't see anybody signed up. Is there anybody that wants to make any public comments? Okay. Item number five, Tree City USA Award Presentation.
I guess that would be me.
All right. Well, first off, let me thank you for inviting me here to your council meeting tonight to share in this award with you. It's very special to me and our department and I'm really glad that Milton and the City of Milton has continued to support the Tree City USA Award through a wonderful forestry program. The Tree City USA is an annual award which recognizes a community's time, effort and the dollars spent on their tree program over the past year. This award is not just a rubber stamp. To be designated a Tree City, you need to do some pretty serious work. And part of that is you need to meet certain standards. One is to have a legally constituted tree board or a department that manages your trees, to have a tree ordinance that meets certain requirements, to have an Arbor Day observation as well as a proclamation and a financial commitment of at least $2 per capita. Trees do many things for us, like cleaning our air and water, they provide us with oxygen, shade for our bald heads, our babies and everybody in between. Trees also help make our homes more valuable, our businesses more successful and our cities more livable. Milton has recognized these values and these benefits and has taken steps to preserve, plant and manage your trees. In fact, Milton has received, has also received this year a Wisconsin D&amp;R Urban Forestry Grant which helps them educate the citizens to take some action, especially in light of Emerald Ashore with trees on their own properties. The grant also is there to help provide training for staff which helps you guys to build a more sustainable and ongoing forestry program. In addition, it's also helping providing some funds to do some removals, again in light of Emerald Ashore, but also and more importantly in replanting. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and your vision and for providing for these trees in your community with a special kind of care to keep things, keep good things growing. And on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, the National Association of State Foresters and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, congratulations on receiving this national recognition for your tree care program for the third year in a row.
Thank you.
So I don't know if Howie wants this or who would like to shake hands and have a picture taken. We also have a flag which several of you can hold up behind, you know, the award.
Do you want to do a nice picture quick?
Sure.
It'll look great in the newspaper. Oh, Kim's ready.
I noticed he's not.
Okay. How many people do we need to hold the flag?
Probably two. Yeah, Howie should.
For everyone.
Yes.
Forever Allen.
Forever Allen.
Do you want to stand?
No, you can't. You can't be made of.
How do you want to get the?
Do you want the logo on it too?
Actually, I'd like it in front of the position because I don't want the glare of the grass.
Oh.
Sorry, Mark.
You guys can stand with the flag like right here.
Should we stand behind them?
A little bit closer.
Smile. You can say smile.
Okay. I can see you right in front of the flag a little bit. I can see you standing.
Inga, she gonna get the three links there?
We'll have Matt go stand behind them.
You can also do this.
Sounds kind of close. He's got a teakill. He's like here.
I don't know if he's gonna fill in so then I just need to maybe to shake hands and then.
Over here. Yeah, you can. Yeah. Stand over here by Teresa where I can't see.
And I don't really care about a glare, so let's, okay, you guys over here. And then we do have a whole council in there too.
Oh, okay, we'll stand right here. Ooh, nice.
And you could, do you want to shake hands or what do you want? Where do you want to?
Just, just on either side. Okay, okay. Then you stand by Allen. That's good. Perfect. Okay.
My Lorax.
Go a little closer. There we go. Okay, one, two, three.
Lovely. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is awesome. We're not trying to look at the paper with marks.
Oh, it's not a problem.
It's just a problem.
Thank you, everyone.
Your password. Such a password for these students.
Cheers.
Have some excitement.
That is spirit.
I do have to say, I really appreciate that you guys actually have your award hung up in a nice public space. You can see it?
Yes.
And it'll continue to grow throughout the years because you're gonna add leaves every year and then even just no, a little larger, a nice bush for more.
Oh, cool.
Or years from now, you'll come to that ballpark.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and direction regarding a site plan for a pavilion at Veterans Park.
So this, we have this item on the agenda for the council this evening. Typically, we don't have site plans on the council agenda, but because this is an improvement made to a public park, we wanted the council to be able to weigh in on this so the folks who are doing the fundraising can have proper direction. A group of local community folks who I think we're all very well familiar with have come together with a wonderful proposal to build a new pavilion in Veterans Park. They are in the process of beginning the fundraising and they have supplied us with a site plan to show where the pavilion would be located and what the pavilion will look like. Parks and Recreation have reviewed this site plan and passed along a favorable recommendation. And earlier this evening, the Plan Commission also reviewed the site plan and passed along a favorable recommendation with the contingencies that are outlined in the memo as well as a separate request for some enhanced landscaping around, I think what would be the eastern edge of the building, generally where the restroom facilities are. The reason we brought this to the council though is we again wanted to make sure that the council was, A, aware of this project and B, if you had any comments, questions and concerns, those could be addressed because the next time this will come before the council, the facility will be constructed and they'll be ready to donate it to the city for, as a city asset. So we wanted to make sure that the council could see it before then so you aren't put into a position where you're saying, "We're donating one again." So I think everybody's probably familiar with this project, but again, just wanted to make sure that it was open and transparent and there was a public process that would assist them in their fundraising so they can go out and say, "Yes, this has the stamp of approval from the Plan Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission and the City Council." So that's why the item is on the agenda this evening. Mr. Mike Fredericks is available for questioning. He's heading up the fundraising efforts for this pavilion and has also been instrumental in its design work and location. So if you have questions specifically about the process of the fundraising or how the pavilion will be constructed through volunteer labor and things of that nature, Mr. Mike Fredericks is available. Otherwise, if you have questions specifically about the site plan, Howie has reviewed that and passed along a staff recommendation for approval. And then Inga and I think Jerry from the Parks and Recreation Committee can provide any insight that they may have based on any discussions that occurred at that meeting. But other than that, we're really just looking for any comments, questions or concerns, no necessary action, but really that's why we have it listed as discussion and direction if there is any from the council on this matter so they can address that.
I just had one question. I don't see it on this map, but I think a different map had only shown one handicap parking space.
There'll be two.
There'll be two, okay.
Well, it's kind of varied. There's a proposed.
Sorry, we're filming this one, so.
The park already has one in front. We are looking to add in more parking on the, be the north side and between the two trees, I think you've got a picture of it, that's proposed. That would have probably two also.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just one.
No, no. And then it's gonna be, according to Dick, he wants two and I think that it needs to have two.
Okay.
So that's our plan.
All right.
I'll just stay up here.
Anybody else have anything?
I think that this is an awesome idea and I think that it's great that once again our community people have stepped up to make this incredible donation.
I do have a question. This was brought up to me and I unfortunately wasn't able to be at Plan Commission tonight and I apologize for that.
That's all right.
When you excavate for the pavilion.
Yes.
There, there is towards the, you know, towards the park side, I noticed the property when I've been there for events and what, the property slopes down somewhat there?
Quite a bit, yes.
Could, could it be possible that some of that fill that you might have to take out would be drawn back to reduce that, that slope? The only reason I bring it up is for, for people who visit the site in wheelchair.
The question with that, you probably would, we'd talk to Howie a little bit because of the water flow that goes through that park. So I mean, we gotta follow and make sure we don't damage the water flow that's going through that park because a lot of runoff comes through there is what Howie's told me. And so, so we got, we're doing it according, we're working with Howie and with the city to make sure that we don't back up water into the streets or back it up into the park so it will actually still flow and be good.
So at least the area might be okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I just bring that up because?
Yeah, I know in an ideal world, we'd have it sloping perfect and, and we'll do it the best we can according to the contour of the land.
I do have a question, but it's more of a Howie question. This map is actually not showing a sidewalk where the proposed parking stalls are going to go in, so will we have, do we have that in our budget so that when this comes in, we will be able to do a sidewalk to get people from this new parking lot up to the building?
They're planning on having a sidewalk from the parking lot to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If that park, we weren't sure if the parking lot was gonna be approved. If the parking lot gets approved, we will get the sidewalk put in there. That will, that will get done by our generous donors that have donated the time and labor and, and we'll be able to get that done. That's a small portion.
Anything else?
Are there implications as far as the water and sewer? This, I guess would be a Howie question too.
Oh, as far, no, I mean, the, well, the water and sewer is available on Orchard Row and mains are sized. There won't be a problem.
Okay, so running those lines and so on would be no difficulty?
No, that shouldn't bother that, yeah.
Just to say, as Linda, we really appreciate the thing that everyone is doing to complete this project, so thanks.
Thank you.
Also, I think it's a good idea.
Gonna set a new standard for park pavilions, so.
Everybody's gonna have.
I hope so. I hope so.
Thank you very much and thanks for coming to both meetings. Okay, so what do we need? Just, we don't really need anything, just a consensus? You guys are all okay with this project moving forward?
Yep.
Okay, then. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 464 regulating building construction.
So this item along with the following four additional items are all related in the sense that the city is looking to contract out commercial building inspections, so these five items have a relation to that overall concept. And they go in a sequential order, but what I did as part of the packet is to type up one memo that addresses all five issues to show their sequence and the nexus between those items and, and why each one plays a role in that overall concept. But taking a few steps back, as I referenced in the memo, but probably not to the degree that it warrants it, the City of Milton has been incredibly fortunate over the last many, many years to have Howie on staff and be able to perform building inspections at the level that he has, to have a commercial building inspector on staff who also wears about 35 other hats that Howie does. The city has been very fortunate and it has saved developers' time and money over the last many, many years. And I've talked about it at great lengths over the last couple of years, the growth that we have seen is wonderful, but there, it comes with additional changes to processes. There is a tipping point, as I, as I referenced on many occasions, where things need to change when, when we go past a certain threshold of growth. And in speaking with Howie, again, this is, this was Howie's recommendation, we started talking about this last year and we're at that point now that the contracting out of building inspections is the most effective way to continue to meet the demands for buildings that are occurring in Milton. And, you know, we've talked at great length about the numbers that we've seen in Milton, you know, $44 million worth of new value, building permits at an unprecedented level. And in the, at least in the foreseeable future, we don't see that changing. The amount of development proposals that we review on a, on a regular basis, whether those come to fruition or not, are, are just beyond anything that we've seen in the past. So this would be a step in the, in the direction of, again, meeting the demand that, that we are seeing. And this would only address commercial inspections, residential inspections would still be performed by Howie. So this, this is only a portion of that, those activities that Howie undertakes. We would still do site plan reviews for smaller commercial buildings here within the city. The state actually requires review over 25,000 square feet, so that's been the practice for a long, long time. So this really only addresses commercial inspections. The city would still issue the permit and still be in charge of the site plan review. It's just when it comes time for the project to be completed and inspections need to occur, general engineering contractors or general engineering company, GEC, at a portage would perform that inspection. And this is a service that they provide to many, many, many other communities. It's a kind of outlined in the memo. When you're a very small community and you're fortunate to have somebody like Howie on your staff, you can perform this in-house. When you start to get one of those mid-growth communities, economies of scale no longer work in that fashion, so you generally may look to contract out and that's really where we are. When you become a larger community, you know, like a Janesville, you're gonna have multiple inspectors on staff. I think Janesville has six on staff. We're certainly not there yet, but this is the interim step as growth continues to occur. So these five items, again, are all tangentially related to one another. The first item on the agenda for discussion and possible action is ordinance 464 which regulates building construction. And this item allows us to delegate building inspection to the city, which then allows us to then authorize another entity to do so. So item, or ordinance 464 allows the council to delegate that authority to another entity, which in this case would be GEC through further actions on the agenda. Item number nine, which is ordinance 462 regulating commercial inspections in the City of Milton, updates the, the language within our ordinances to be more congruent with current numerations and iterations of the state building code. So again, it creates, it creates a level of conformity, so the building inspectors who are coming in are architects who are reviewing our ordinances, we have a common set of language that they'll see throughout the state. The next item, item number 10 is the actual contract with GEC to perform building inspections. So that's ultimately what we would be signing with GEC in order to begin that, that, that process. Item number 11 is a submittal of an application to the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services indicating that GEC would be performing those services in the City of Milton. And item number 12 establishes a new fee schedule that is commensurate with the fees that GEC would charge for their services. So that's kind of just a general rundown of each item, but from a procedural standpoint, each one of these items has a kind of a purpose in the overall process. But I'll pause here to, if there's questions about individual items or just the overall concept, certainly can do so, or if there's questions for Howie or how this is gonna work, please feel free to come at me.
I have one, Al and Howie, because I don't always know this, but I got thinking about this last night. If GEC becomes our provider for these services, do they assume responsibility for liability issues, i.e. a inspection is done or the inspector asks for certain things to be done at a commercial building site, they're not done? How does that work? Does that make sense or can the, can the builder, general contractor and/or owner come back and complain to the city that they weren't treated properly or do they go directly to GEC, I guess?
I think from a legal standpoint, I'll have Mark answer that question. From a more general standpoint, complaints are kind of like air pollution. They don't care about boundaries, so they're gonna come to us regardless. But, but yeah, I think in, you know, as this process, you know, becomes kind of a transitional period and folks will say, "Hey, you know, I've been building in the City of Milton for 30 years, why do I gotta talk to this other guy now?" It'll be an educational process for the community and certainly those complaints will, you know, would generally come to us. It would be like any other contract service. If somebody doesn't like the job that Mark Schrader's doing as our attorney, which comes up infrequently, you know, they, they complain to us or, or, you know, cross-connection services or engineering services. But from, to, to, I think to answer your initial question, or at least how I understand your initial question, in terms of liability, I think Mark would be better prepared to answer that question as to what liability does the city hold if an inspection is done and, and maybe, maybe either, either direction is given that is not followed or an inspection is done and something is missed?
Yeah, or disagreement.
Okay.
If it's done.
Yeah, there's a couple of, I think there's about three questions in there, so.
Well, as Al's indicated, they're doing this on behalf of the city and so they would, any person who owns property on, for which there was a commercial inspection, if it was not done appropriately, I guess, could certainly look to the city, they could also look to the contractor. And then the city would, if the city was perceived against the city and their insurance carrier would be looking to the, to GEC and its insurance carrier to assume responsibility for, for this. There's an insurance requirement in the document which requires general liability in the minimum amount of $1 million. And so that, and that, that's fairly common in terms of a relationship between a general contractor and a subcontractor and it, it's similar to that situation here, so.
I just wanted to be sure because it's kind of new territory.
Yep, sure. I mean, yeah, it is and it isn't. It's a new territory in this, in this function, but not new territory in the sense that we have contracted private services, service providers that provide services to the citizens of Milton that folks maybe not even are aware of. So in that regard, it's, it's not new, but this will certainly be a new process for the commercial building inspection world.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I was just wondering if we were going to need to go out for different estimates or bids, maybe as budget time comes around, or if we're going to just set it up by two years at a time or three years?
So for, for professional services, bids are not required. We, we went with GEC because they have experience in performing inspections already in the City of Milton. They're currently under contract to perform cross-connection inspections within the city, so they're a known entity. In terms of, of city financial responsibility, this is a contract in which they are paid for the work they do only. There's no kind of retainer or set fee, so in the unlikely event that the spigot turns off and development ceases to exist in the City of Milton, if there's no development, there's no inspections to be conducted, so therefore there would be no cost to the City of Milton because GEC wouldn't be performing work in the City of Milton. In terms of evaluating the contract and its duration, there are out clauses within the contract that both parties could exercise and I think that this is something that we will monitor on a regular basis. In the event that, again, development slows down, we may wanna look at, you know, bringing this back in-house, but I don't see that very likely, especially in the short term. I have used this, you know, maybe cliched analogy a couple of times recently. In terms of the City of Milton, I believe the toothpaste is out of the tube, development is occurring. I don't see it slowing down. You know, the economy certainly will downturn at some point, but what we have seen in Milton is that we are growing at a faster rate than any other community in Rock County. So if it slows down, it'll probably slow down at a slower pace in Milton. But, you know, if we, we hit another great recession like we did in '08, again, if development's not occurring, inspections aren't happening, so there's real no financial liability to the city. We all know that Howie's gonna work for another 20 years, so we've at least got 20 years worth of, of at least having a commercial building inspector on staff. But, you know, after that 20 years, when Howie does retire, you know, hiring a new commercial building inspector on staff would be incredibly costly, so retaining this relationship with GEC or any other commercial building inspecting firm would likely be the path that we would head anyways. So I know that that is quite a circuitous answer to your question, but that, that's kind of how I view it at this time at least, with the best information we have available to us today.
And looks like it's set up to be a yearly contract from what I was reading here. So we can always look at it again every year if.
Yep.
Be, but, yeah.
And the, and, and, and sorry, Bill, I, I see you reaching for your mic, but, you know, one of the only things that, one of the really only changes that happens to us through this process, again, we would be issuing the permits, folks would be contacting the City of Milton to have permits issued, then they would contact GEC to schedule those inspections. So that would be one of the only changes is once they get to the point where their building is constructed, I would imagine for the, you know, at least foreseeable future, folks are gonna call up Brenda Matthews and say, "Hey, my building's done. How do we get an inspection?" And we'll probably refer them to GEC and then they will schedule that inspection. So that'll be kind of a slight administrative change. The other change is reflected in item number 12 where GEC provides a new fee schedule for commercial building permits and that's how they recruit their. this back in-house, but I don't see that very likely, especially in the short term. I have used this, you know, maybe cliched analogy a couple of times recently. In terms of the city of Milton, I believe the toothpaste is out of the tube. Development is occurring. I don't see it slowing down. You know, the economy certainly will downturn at some point, but what we have seen in Milton is that we are growing at a faster rate than any other community in Rock County. So if it slows down, it'll probably slow down at a slower pace in Milton. But, you know, if we, we hit another great recession like we did in '08, again, if development's not occurring, inspections aren't happening, so there's real no financial liability to the city. We all know that Howie's going to work for another 20 years, so we've at least got 20 years worth of, of at least having a commercial building inspector on staff. But, you know, after that 20 years, when Howie does retire, you know, hiring a new commercial building inspector on staff would be incredibly costly. So retaining this relationship with GEC or any other commercial building inspecting firm would likely be the path that we would head anyways. So I know that that is quite a circuitous answer to your question, but that, that's kind of how I view it at this time, at least, with the best information we have available to us today.
And looks like it's set up to be a yearly contract, from what I was reading here. So we can always look at it again every year.
Yep.
But, yeah.
And the, and, and, and sorry, Bill, I, I see you reaching for your mic, but, you know, one of the only things that, one of the really only changes that happens to us through this process, again, we would be issuing the permits, folks would be contacting the city of Milton to have permits issued, and then they would contact GEC to schedule those inspections. So that would be one of the only changes, is once they get to the point where their building is constructed, I would imagine for the, you know, at least foreseeable future, folks are going to call up Brenda Matthews and say, hey, my building's done, how do we get an inspection? And we'll probably refer them to GEC, and then they will schedule that inspection. So that'll be kind of a slight administrative change. The other change is reflected in item number 12, where GEC provides a new fee schedule for commercial building permits, and that's how they recruit their costs. But interestingly enough, what we found is that many of those costs were similarly in line with what we already had, so it's likely not even going to register, especially on large-scale projects, as a, as a change to anybody's kind of bottom line.
Actually, it looks like you didn't even redline anything in that section at all, so.
We did not have commercial inspections previously.
Because it looks like it's the same as what Derek said.
They were all handled under one kind of category, whether it was residential or commercial. So, so a, a commercial permit is a new concept, only, entitled only. So, you know, if somebody was to build a 100,000-square-foot building out in the industrial park, they were, the permit fees that they would take for fixtures, for faucets and things like that, were all handled under one permit fee schedule. So that's, so those permit fees, although they're new in name only, those fees already existed, and the fees were pretty similar to what we've already seen. I think in a few cases, they're less. Is that correct? Yeah.
So basically, the few pages that you sent out to us, redlined one?
Yep.
The whole nine, section nine, that is new?
Yeah, yeah. It new and.
It wasn't read, so I didn't, you know.
Yeah, new in name only, yep.
Okay.
Do you want, like, motion after motion after motion?
I think that that would be appropriate specifically because we're dealing with two ordinances, a resolution, a contract, and then authorization. So, again, if we want to go through these individually, and if you have questions about specific language in any one of these, by all means, stop after each one and ask for questions, however you want to proceed. But yeah, I think it would be appropriate to have a separate motion for items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
All right, so let's get at it. Item number eight.
A motion to approve item number eight.
That's ordinance 464.
Or second. Thank you.
And is it?
Ordinance 464, is that correct?
And waive the second and third reading?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
And adopt.
And waive the second and third hearing and adopt, or reading and adopt.
Anything else? Did we cover it?
Set.
All right, there's a motion and a second.
Bill wants a second?
Yeah, he has a second, but then she's, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 462 regulating commercial building inspections in the city of Milton.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 462, waive the second and third readings, and adopt.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Anything on this one that you want to talk about? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right, let me check things off. Okay, item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding a contract with general engineering to perform commercial building inspections in the city of Milton.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with general engineering to perform commercial building inspections in the city.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or any further discussion on the contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action authorizing the submittal of an application for delegated municipal, municipality authority with the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services.
I'll make the motion to authorize the submittal of an application for delegated municipality authority with the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this, or any discussion about this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2019-15 establishing a new fee schedule for building permits.
I'll move for adoption of the motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions, any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 13.
Just one thing, sorry. I meant to actually mention this, and this is in regards to Linda's question. General engineering contracting, I know I talked about them in the memo, you know, they're one of the largest firms that does this types of service in the state of Wisconsin. In the event that we did not have a commercial inspector on staff, Howie wins the lottery tonight, and tomorrow walks into my office and says, I'm done. He wouldn't even walk in, he would just text me probably. Facebook message me or something. We would be forced, as the city, by not having a commercial building inspector on staff to, the, the state would force us to contract with someone, and it's very likely they would probably tell us that GEC would be our contractor. So, again, I just want to make sure that, that, I think it's important to note that this is, this is a good firm that's done work with us before, and, and is one that does work all over the state. And, and in the event, again, how fortunate we are to have Howie, and in the event that we were to lose Howie, prior to starting this contract, we'd be forced to do this anyways. But, and GEC likely would be the people that would be doing it, so.
Thank you for further clarification. Item number 13, discussion and possible action on adapting the preliminary Public Works Resolution 2019-16 concerning the assessment of sanitary sewer mains and curb and gutter replacement for the Windsor Court and Front Street Public Works Improvement Project.
Do you want to take a question?
Howie, please, earn your money.
This summer, we're doing the Front Street and Windsor Street projects, but in the city ordinance, curb and gutter replacement and new sanitary sewer are eligible for assessment. And what this resolution does is it allows a public works report to be made, and then a public hearing to be conducted, and then at the public hearing, the city council determines assessments for the project, so. So, and all of the affected properties are notified with a, they'll be notified by a letter, and they can attend the public hearing and see what concerns they have one way or another, so.
So at this time, the assessments have not been established.
Correct.
This resolution only allows us the ability to schedule the public hearing and notify those property owners of those assessments. So at this time, we don't know what those assessments will be, but the property owners will be notified, and then, and then this resolution allows us to set the public hearing to hear from those property owners, whoever received those notifications, and, and discuss what that, any, any concerns that they may have with that assessment. Many of the property owners that are, would be affected by these projects attended our public meeting that we held on May 20th, but certainly not all of them. And by, and at that point, we didn't have, we didn't even have bids at that point. So, so the amount that they will be charged, we discussed it in, in ranges at that time. So when the day comes for the public hearing, they will have been noticed by letter in advance of that, and can, and, and the council will as well, so we can have that discussion. We haven't had a situation like this in a year or two, right?
No, last year we did.
Was it last year?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So by the time the public hearing takes place, they will know the amount of the assessment?
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a pretty close estimate, yeah.
That's what draws them to the meeting.
Yes.
Before that, then, before that meeting, if a property owner wants to know how you, how that number came about, if you will, right? The, the logistics behind that number, they could inquire of that, how, correct?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be given, when we send the letter out for the assessment, they're given an estimate on the amount of curb and gutter replacement and their cost.
Okay, so they see the.
So when they get their assessment hearing notice, they get an estimate also on the.
So at least they'll have an understanding of how it came about?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, the good news is, we opened up bids for this project last week, Thursday.
Yeah.
And the bids came in under estimates. The overall bid for the overall project came in under what we expected, so that's good news.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2019-16 and to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 14, discussion and possible action regarding employee handbook and policy manual updates for your bedtime reading enjoyment. How'd you like this one?
I think this is time for Inga to earn her money.
Just review all of the changes.
Well, there, there are quite a few of them. A lot of them are just updating to current practices and procedures that we have in place, and some of the other ones are adding in additional language where we were lacking in some areas. So I don't know if there are specific questions on any sections of it, or additional discussion that needs to happen. I think everything's pretty much outlined in the memo, but like I said, if you have any specific questions, or Al, if there's anything specific that you want pointed out, then we can do that, but there's a lot.
I don't know that there's anything specifically that I want to point it out, other than the fact that, you know, similar to the item that we just discussed a little bit ago, there's, there's kind of, this item sets the stage for the next two items, really. They're not as, there's not as strong of a nexus between this item and the following two as there was for the, the previous five, but they, they are interrelated. For example, section 7.2, job descriptions, is tied directly to item number 15 on your agenda. The item number 16, Code of Ethics, is also reflected in, in these policy changes. But I don't think there's anything specific I want to point out, but certainly if there are questions, and, and, and by all means, I get it, and this was brought up to me today, and I, I certainly get it, there's a lot of information here. If folks do not feel comfortable taking action this evening, if you want more time to absorb this, by all means, we can, we can delay this to the 18th or, or July. You know, there certainly is no impetus to have these adopted this evening. It's just, you know, when, took a long time to put together, and we finally got it done, so we put it on the next agenda.
So, so I guess what we try and do is, on a annual or semi-annual basis, look at our employee handbook and see if there are any updates that we need to make. So this is kind of the time of year that we're trying to look at those things and make those changes and updates.
We probably started this in, what, January, though?
Yes, yes, it's been a while. But what I did do in this version of the employee handbook is I did try to put together a schedule, so there's more of a regular occurrence of reviewing the policies, to make sure that we're hitting all of them on a regular basis, too.
And was there any feedback from the employees on this? Were there any concerns that anybody brought up? Did you hear anything from anyone?
Yeah, I mean, I would say there was definitely feedback.
Yeah.
Folks, I, I mean, I was very pleased with the, with the amount of detail that some folks got into in terms of questions and, and edifications and things like that. So, yeah, this was sent out to every employee within the city of Milton a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and then we also printed out a couple hard copies to have at the Public Works and Police Department and City Hall, and at the library, just so people, if they wanted to flip through it, instead of going to an electronic version, they had that option available as well.
And, and Mark reviewed certain sections of this as well, from a legal standpoint. It was more kind of on the, the procedure side of things, but reviewed, you know, certain aspects of this as well. Each individual employee's job description that you're, that are reflected in item number 15, reviewed that, sat down with me, sat down with Inga, talked through that process. So, I, I mean, yes, I think is the answer to the question. Yeah, it took some time. And when I say "we," I really mean Inga. I mean, this was a tremendous amount of work, and Inga is very well-engaged in the HR world, especially with our insurance provider of Sibmic, and, and, you know, really is, is, it's important to her that we follow best practices and best policies, and, and has done, and that, this is reflective of that, and she's done a ton of work on it. This is the stuff that we don't necessarily get to see, probably doesn't make a very exciting article in the Courier, or the Gazette, but it's really important work. Believe me, there's a couple people that know how important this work is, and when you don't do it, you find yourself in some hot water.
I wanted to say that, Inga, and all of the staff, but as a former HR person, I, I did read this in my midnight reading, because I'm very interested in it, and I love the fact that you captured a lot of the important detail that needs to be there for employees. And I also love the fact that employees sort of shaped this, or at least had significant input to the process.
Yeah.
So that, that puts me at a lot more comfortable position to make a motion on it, or.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion?
That.
Right, tonight?
If you feel comfortable, like Al said, if you want to wait two weeks, have a little bit more time to read through everything, then that's fine, too, whatever the council feels most comfortable with.
I, I agree, yeah. If you, if you want, if everybody feels good with this tonight, a motion is certainly in order. If not, we are not going to be offended.
Well, I'll make a motion just to get the discussion going, and to.
What do you mean by that?
Well, if somebody.
It's either a motion to approve, or a motion to put it on another agenda.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve it tonight, and if I don't get a second, then I guess we'll get something else.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, there you have it. Okay, is there any, is there any further questions or discussion?
No, I read through it all, and I thought it was great, so.
The striking of the, the 527, the domestic partner benefits piece, talk about that a little bit in terms of.
Yeah, that was a change in state law. The state does not allow us to offer domestic partner benefits anymore. So we had to remove that from our employee handbook, but also our health insurance and our dental insurance.
For anyone across the state, it doesn't?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I was misreading that.
Well, we still provide, like, if you're married, right?
If, if you're married, but a domestic partnership does not qualify you for the health and dental benefits that we'd offered before.
Okay, but they can be, they're unmarried.
So they give them, they take away that.
Yeah, that was a change that was made last year, prior to the election.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're prior to the election.
Okay. So.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and thank you, everyone, for spending that time reading it and digesting it, and it was a lot, and I appreciate the time that it took. Discussion and possible action regarding City Hall job description updates.
Again, it's kind of the same process here. Inga, feel free to jump in. We've seen some changes at City Hall from an organizational standpoint. You know, as folks may remember, there is one less employee in City Hall than there was just a few, well, about two years ago. So job duties have shit changed, shifted. We're fortunate to have Rebecca Anderson on board as a part-time employee. She has taken on, you know, responsibilities that previously weren't held by the individual who held that position, so that changed things. And, again, lessons learned. It's important to have job descriptions, period, but it's also important to have job descriptions that are updated on, on a very regular basis to reflect the duties that are assigned to those individuals. So in this case, this is City Hall, so myself, Dan Nelson, Inga Cushman, Leanne Schrader, Carrie Cheeseborough, and Rebecca Anderson. Always duties haven't changed in 30 years, so.
Or taken them away now, so is this a way to keep them working longer?
And, and just with this, too, I think since the reorganization, I guess, of City Hall, we've kind of settled into our regular job duties, so it made sense to try and put everything on paper again.
Yeah.
Can these be approved as a batch?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would move the approval of the updated job descriptions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 16, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 466, updating the city of Milton Code of Ethics.
So this ordinance really updates or, or provides some clarification within the ethics ordinance. It doesn't substantively change any of the items that were previously in there, but, you know, just like a small example, when the, when the ordinance was initially adopted, I wasn't part of it. Like, I wasn't listed as an individual who was, who was bound to the ethics ordinance. So, you know, those were just kind of things that we added to this. Mark reviewed it and, and added some, some changes as well. So, again, wanted to make sure that this was updated to address really what the intent of the ordinance was, and how it's been carried out since the time of its adoption. of its adoption. But again, when Howie wins the lottery, and quits tomorrow, and decides to give a couple million dollars to Inga, and I, at least it's in writing. Is that a fair assessment, Mark, of what?
Yes, that's correct. It's not, it's basically a cleanup of the ordinance, as the city has had experience in administering it, which is quite normal with an ordinance of this size and scope. So, that's basically what it is. Substantively, it is the same.
Let's remember who drafted the first resolution, or ordinance. Teresa Rush.
That's why there's lots of-
We can't thank you enough, Teresa.
You can see the red line version. There's not a lot of changes. They're really, really-
She's not received any community recognition for this yet, though.
Defining who's a relative, you know, stuff like that. It's important. It's, you know, codified in language. We all, you know, kind of understand what that means. But what about your spouse's stepchild, or something, so?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Now, ordinance 2019466, is that the one that you-
Yep.
-repealing and recreating Chapter 2, Article 1, Division 1, Section 2.1 through 212 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton Code of Ethics.
Are you waiting? Is there a waiver of the second and third?
If you so choose.
Yes.
And adopt?
And adopt. Oh, there it is. We have quite a lot of pages here.
There's no second to this.
I'll second it.
There's a second. Any further question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 465, regulating domestic animals in the Milton Cemetery.
So as the memo indicates, in a response to concerns expressed by members of the community, as well as members of city staff, an ordinance has been requested to be prepared to prohibit domestic animals from Milton Cemetery along North Janesville Street. This is an unfortunate situation, in which conditions have, I guess, worsened over time, in terms of individuals who have brought their pets into the cemetery, and not cleaned up after them. I say this is unfortunate, because, I guess, from my personal perspective, I find it hard to believe, and that this exists, and how seemingly disrespectful that would be for the individuals who reside in the cemetery. But really, from a sanitary and safety aspect from city staff, as well. As I point out in the memo, there already is an ordinance that prohibits folks from leaving their animal droppings behind. But the enforceability of that is difficult, because as Chief Mark Ward told me when we were discussing this, it's very difficult for the officer to see the moment of deposit. So this would provide officers the ability to simply, you know, as they drive by the cemetery, look in and see an individual with a dog, and say, hey, you can't be in here. With that being said, certainly understand the sensitivity of it. There are folks who use the cemetery for recreational, you know, activities, to walk their pet, to walk themselves, have their pet maybe even visit a site. But as with most things in government, regulations are created rarely for those who follow good social behavior. They're created for those who do not. And that's the situation that exists with this item.
Are you looking for comments now, or would you like a motion?
Have at it. Comments, motion, whatever you want to do.
I'm leaning towards, which doesn't happen often, by the way, but I'm leaning towards voting no on this ordinance. And the rationale for it is multiple, but I'll try to be succinct, I guess. Number one, I agree with what you've said, Al, that it's difficult enforcing it. So the current ordinance exists. It's difficult to enforce that ordinance. Putting in another ordinance is still going to be difficult to enforce, short of hiding somebody in the cemetery, or putting in trail cams, or whatever we have to do. Secondly, unfortunately, I always find that you can't legislate morality, which is very, you know, which is probably this kind of situation. I guess having an ordinance, at least, we can go to people and say, you know, you can't be doing this, and we're going to find you accordingly, if we catch them. So. The third thing is, I just want to point out, I live down that way. I walk my dogs, number one. I've trained my dogs, they don't go potty while we're walking. I mean, they may pee somewhere, pardon my French, but I've trained them to go at home. And then we go for a walk. Number two, I do walk in the cemetery quite often, because it's rather peaceful. I know people would find that maybe strange, but it is peaceful there. And I keep the dogs on the blacktop sidewalks and driveways. So people would do that. At least then it would be visible, and we'd be able to, you know, clean it up, or whatever. The third thing I want to point out is, in this cemetery, I've often seen stray dogs, who have come up to my dogs and me. They're not on a leash, they have no collar, they have no tags. I've seen lots of feral cats along Janesville Street. Some of my neighbors have feral cats living under their porch, which are over in the cemetery as well, probably defecating. And I have seen at least two coyotes. In fact, there's some coyotes living back, I don't know if Howie's aware of that, but in the woods, alongside the well back there. Family of coyotes lives back there. So they're defecating two, probably, in the cemetery. So I'm just offering another perspective. I understand what we're trying to accomplish. I just worry that we end up adopting ordinances, and after ordinance, that we can't really enforce, and we really have no control over. But that's my comment.
Does anybody else have any comments or thoughts they'd like to share?
Howie, this was reviewed by the Public Works Committee as well. Did they offer any insights or thoughts?
We went over some of the issues. Some of the issues are, it's become steadily worse the last couple of years. And we have to wash the mowers now, every time we mow. Sometimes the guys get it on them. We do hear people that just walk out there have concerns about the animals going on their relatives' graves. They don't like that. So they've asked, more than just the last couple of years, to just not have pets out there. And as far as, like, the enforcement part, from what I've heard, if they see an animal there, they just tell you to leave. And there won't be enforcement if you just leave. You know, that's the situation. But otherwise, someone will just, happens, you know, like in the parks and stuff, too. They'll just pull out a bag and say, oh, we're going to clean it up. But that hasn't been happening the last couple of years. So. But it has become like more of a steady problem, where the guys notice they do have to go and clean the mowers off now, because it's on it and stuff. So. And it's just, it's not, it's just a matter of, if this happens, you can just tell them they have to leave, just on sight. So.
And we have to have an ordinance. We can't just put a sign up?
You can't have any enforcement of it, just without an ordinance. Where you can't just tell them to leave, because they're like, why? Why should I? You know, that's the problem without the ordinance. So. Or there's no consequence if they don't leave.
And the current ordinance covers the cemetery, though?
It covers, currently, you can have your animal in there.
The current ordinance, where we require people to clean up their-
It covers the entire city.
Right. And that includes the cemetery?
Yes, it does.
And there's a fine and appropriate action taken if someone doesn't clean up?
There is, yeah.
Okay. I'm just clarifying to make sure.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's a difficult thing, but this is like an extra that, you know, I kind of feel like you probably should do. So.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 465, regulating domestic animals in the Milton Cemetery.
And just to clarify, that's only one cemetery. It's only one cemetery. It's not an ordinance that covers the-
The other ones are private property.
Right. It's the only cemetery that we have authority over. Junction Cemetery and St. Mary's are private property. Those individuals chose to adopt a similar provision. They could post that on their private property.
Yeah. That, I don't know. I think they would just have to call, like, for a trespassing thing, or something, probably. So, yeah.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
It is that motion to waive the second and third and adopt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. Item number 18, discussion and possible action regarding a forfeiture schedule for fire prevention standards.
So a couple of weeks ago, we adopted an ordinance that provided the fire inspector the ability to issue forfeitures for violations of fire matters. And as commensurate with that, the then judge, municipal judge, sets a forfeiture schedule, which is this item on the agenda tonight. We get about one or two of these a year. But this has been specifically related to the fire compliance standards.
I make a motion to approve the forfeiture schedule.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding scheduling of July 2, 2019, common council meeting.
As we do many years past, you know, we have this item on the agenda to make sure that the council is aware that there's a council meeting the week of July 4. Sometimes it falls directly on the 4th, sometimes it's the 3rd, sometimes it's the 5th. This year, it's the 2nd. And wanted to have a discussion, to see if there was an interest in canceling that meeting, with the understanding that it's a holiday week, or not. But wanted to give fair warning to that.
Didn't we cancel last year?
Last year would have fallen on the 3rd of July, and I believe we did.
Do we know if there's a lot that would be on the agenda if we don't?
At this time, it's hard to predict. If you would ask me three weeks ago, would there be 22 items on the June 4 meeting? I would have probably not anticipated that. But we know that there will be a handful of items on June 18. But I do not have anything that is set in stone for July 2 at this time, or that would be ready to go on July 2, if it was in the hopper. Certainly, there are projects that are out there that are in various stages of development and approval. But I don't know of anything that is absolutely set for July 2. I know for certain there are items set for June 18.
What about plan commission? Would they likely have to meet anyways?
Same thing would apply there. There's nothing that is set, scheduled for July 2, for the plan commission. There's something that's set for June 18. And it would likely, what's good for the council is probably good for the plan commission in that regard. If there are items on the plan commission agenda, there's very likely good, meaning there's going to be items on the council agenda. So. So at this time, I think it's too early to tell, but we could certainly revisit this on June 18, really more of just, hey, what are you thinking?
The only thing that I had, I had talked to our auditors about doing their annual, like, presentation of the 2018 audit report. And I preliminarily told them to schedule July 2, but I said, depending on what is decided on that day, it may have to get moved to the 16th.
Or August, or, yeah, I mean-
I'd like to get it done before August.
Yeah. There's nothing that mandates that it gets done, but it's nice to have it done.
I guess I think we should just go ahead and wait till the next city council meeting decide, see what's coming up.
Sure.
Because that would put us at four weeks, without having a meeting.
After the 18th, yeah. Yes.
A lot of damage could be done between now and four weeks.
It's always possible.
That we would know about.
I personally would prefer that we don't meet unless we have to. So I'll be out of town, so.
Okay.
So what is it that we want to schedule that we don't want to hear from Larry on?
Nah, really, we could do that.
Thanks for the heads up. Now we have something to think about.
I think what's helpful to us is, you know, if there's items that, like, are internally generated, you know, for example, the updates to the handbook, the ordinance, the pet ordinance, pet cemetery ordinance, as we call it internally. If there's items that are internally generated, and we know that there's, the general consensus is, hey, let's skip it if we don't have to, we'll craft our agendas accordingly. There are certain items that just come up that we just can't avoid. And we certainly do not want to slow down business. If somebody has a development that's coming forward, and they say, hey, you know, we really want this on July 2, you know, we would be sensitive to that as well. But I think really more it comes down to, are there items that are internally generated, that on a normal sequencing would fall on that agenda, but certainly could wait another two weeks? That's how we would craft that agenda. And the same applies for Christmas. Maybe we do the same thing for Christmas every year, too.
Well, let's put it on the June 18 agenda, and we can make our final decision June 18. If that works for everybody?
Sure.
So we don't have to necessarily take any action or vote to have it on the 18th?
No.
Okay. All right. General items. Committee reports. We had a few meetings this week. I guess yesterday, we had a meeting.
Yeah. We had three meetings today.
That's true. That's true. Anybody want to report on it? Jerry, Public Works?
Public Works, we basically talked about everything we went through today. Yeah, we basically talked about the cemetery, and then the Front Street Windsor Court assessment, and then the permit fee changes.
Okay. Any other committee meetings?
Yeah, we had-
Library, right?
Library and gathering place. We had, excuse me, a, you know, going away party for Dr. Shiger, who will be leaving the library committee. And so we will be adding one more community member to the library board, probably sometime in July.
July.
Okay. And then for the gathering place, we discussed that there will be another music program for the community on July 13. And, no, June 13. Yes, sorry, wrong month. Joe Kalish, Kalish. You know, they didn't talk much about what kind of music he did, but they kept talking about it, that he's well-known and well-thought-of in the area. So, but that's next week. Other than that, again, we continue to work on the back land and fundraising. So if you receive another letter in the mail, that's what we're about.
On the library board appointment, I believe that that position is under statute, either the superintendent or a designee of the superintendent. So I think, you know, it's a little bit different than the other board members, in terms of the appointment.
Yeah, we have that figured out, who the designee is going to be. Right?
Right. So-
What am I talking about, the library board?
Tim has designated Deb as school district representative. So a community member is going to fill her spot. Yep.
Yep. So we'll have that on the June 18 agenda. We can do that on the June 18.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead and talk.
Yeah, so to catch everybody, not so long ago, Bill was just your average citizen. Yeah, so, so to catch everybody, not so long ago, Bill was just your average citizen. Serving on the library board as a Hall of Famer that he was, then he was elected to the common council and decided to not serve on the library board in that capacity. So Teresa became the library board representative. So that created a vacancy on the library board from the, from the citizen side of things. So we replaced the citizen with Mr. Steve Tupper at our meeting two weeks ago. Now there's a situation in which Superintendent Scheiger is leaving the school district. There is currently a citizen on, or an individual who serves on the library board, who serves from a citizen capacity, who also works for the school district, who will then take that, that school district designee position, thus vacating a citizen spot. So we'll have a new appointment on the June 18th agenda to replace that spot. So it's a big mosaic, and when you shuffle all the pieces around, it's Bill's face.
And it's beautiful.
Can we require them to wear numbers?
We can, we can. Like, you're on the city council now. We could have a uniform for the city council, too, if you wanted. It says City of Milton, and we all have to wear our little shirts every council meeting.
Musical chairs.
I just wanted to give a little bit of a update on this last weekend with Wally Fest. The, just as a backup for anybody that is not aware of, that might be in our internet audience. Wally Fest has, was originally set up to be a fundraiser for several of our, what is known as nonprofit groups throughout the city. And in the last, this year was our fourth year of Wally Fest. And I am very, very happy to say that we had about 1,000 people all weekend, despite the weather.
Who was the fundraising for this year?
The fundraiser is FFA, who is responsible for our fireworks, and then also the chamber. And I just want to speak, not on behalf of, but as a chamber member, I will just say that our Milton area Chamber of Commerce does many, many things throughout the community. A lot of the decorations, the planters, different things like that. Plus, they also do scholarships in the school. So this is, in fact, a very important fundraiser for the chamber. So, and because we wanted this to be an event for the community, we have also utilized SWEPT, who we also had for the Civil War Living History Days. And then we also had show choir and band parents and students that were a part of some of the ongoings of the two days. And they will, they will also, once we find out exactly how much was made and, you know, we know that our expenses were covered, we don't know exactly what the total outcome is yet, though. And I do have to give a shout out to the school district, who is allowing us to use Schilberg Park for this event. Because when you have that many people, you really have to have a lot of space. So it was a successful weekend, and thank you to all of the volunteers who participated to make it happen. That 1,000 number does not include the volunteers that were there for, for those two days. So we have a wonderful community to thank.
Last Friday, I attended the Government 101 session done by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities. And it was both informative and really enjoyable for a day long sitting in a hard chair. It was well worth it.
And current council participation at the League of Municipalities conference is that in October? October, where they have, you know, it's similar to that, and they offer all these other seminars. And they do special outbreak sessions for small communities. So you get to be in a room with a lot of people that are in similar situations that smaller communities face that maybe are a lot different than what bigger communities face. So that's really helpful, too. So we try to encourage you all to go to that, and that's part of the council training budget, so please consider that, too. Or any other trainings that you, you might want to go to, because we have a budget for that.
It's really beneficial to get out there with other communities throughout the state and find out what they are going through, how they have taken, done things in similar situations. Not all of them have the same situations as we do. But, you know, for the majority of the ongoings of the city, everybody has a government, everybody has a budget, and everybody has needs, so.
Okay, staff reports. Ashley?
Besides all the changes on our board, which hasn't changed in like five or six years or so, our summer rein starts next Tuesday, so we have 10 weeks of craziness coming up for us. We're very prepared.
Excellent. Inga? Howie?
Brush collections this week. The yard waste bins are still open. Red Hawk started water main installation on their next subdivision addition up there, so. It's graduation this week, and probably in the middle of June, there's going to be a Little League tournament at Lamar and Liberty.
Oh, really? Oh, fun. Good. That's exciting. I feel like we haven't had one in a while.
No, there hasn't been one for quite a while, so.
Good, good. Dan?
I don't have anything.
Al?
There's a long agenda. Like, we covered most of it, but, no, I don't, I don't think I have anything that's on the, hasn't been set already.
Just quick, we, we do still have funds available for the Residential Exterior Improvement Program. There's about $5,000 left, so just make sure that you're letting your neighbors know, letting other people in the community know about the program.
You have, you have a call. You have a call. It's a man called. You have a man called.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ask Leslie. She will absolutely, what I said, agree with you. She would second that motion.
So, so, you know, one of the items that you all voted on was the closing out of one of those grants because the, the project is completed. So that's really exciting for the City of Milton. I'm happy that we only have $5,000 left. That means that people are taking advantage of this, and we have one project completed. So I'm excited for the community for that. The other thing that I wanted to let you know about is on June 19th, there is, there's a group called Leadership Ethics in the state of Wisconsin. It's a nonprofit, nonpartisan group that does training across party lines. It's not Republican or Democrat. It's just about ethical leadership. And they're doing a training in Milton on June 19th. And it's at 5:30 PM, and I'm going to go up to it because I'm part of that group. I know there's other meetings might be scheduled that night. But we'll have other speakers and other offerings. And really, it's about how do we work together as leaders in a community when we have, you know, sometimes we have real strong partisan or divided views. So it's about really coming together and being transparent, being truthful, and being positive. And those are like the three pillars of this program. So if you want to go, you want to ride with me, as long as we don't have a quorum or anything, just let me know. But there will be other opportunities, too.
Fire commission that night.
So you and Teresa will not be going. Or I guess if you want to skip out on fire commission, I don't know if it'd be ethical, but.
You noticed it.
We can notice that Teresa Linda will be gone to get trained in ethics. Okay. Anything else for anybody?
I would just like to remind everybody, as the weather is warming up, we have a lot of people out there with their children learning to ride bicycles, people that are, more people walking. So please be aware of our pedestrians and our bicyclers.
And do not put your grass clippings in the street. There's an ordinance against it. It's also a safety hazard for bikers and motorcyclists, so. Yep, okay. Just a reminder, we should remind everybody of that at every council meeting. Because we still, I mean, I still have people complaining that there's grass clippings in the roads, so.
I, I just have to anecdotal. Going along Jeansville Street the other night, and there was a gentleman mowing his lawn, and he's blowing it out into the street as I'm going by. So you're right, we need to tell people not to do that. Yeah.
All right, we have another hour of team building for Ryan.
Yeah, since there was confidence about how long it might take this time, I decided we'd do, instead of 20 questions, we'll do 40 questions. Just kidding.
Al won't remember any of them.
He might remember this one. One simple question. What was the last book you read? And I'm going to say that mine was The Handbook. So nobody else can claim that.
Bill, is that a definition of a book? Ashley?
It's 100 and something pages long, if I remember right.
I don't know. A book needs...
There are short stories that are smaller than that. There's not...
Who are the characters? What was the plot?
Anyways, no, I'll also say Shadow Rising by Robert Jordan. It's probably the most recent book I read. It's part of the Wheel of Time series. Anyways.
I just finished, last week, The Trial of Lizzie Borden. I have very strong feelings on whether she's innocent or guilty.
Sacred by Dennis Lehane.
I read Dig by A.S. King.
I read a book, and I can't remember the exact title. Bill might remember, because we're in a book club together. But it, it related to George Washington and the Indian tribes in the time of George Washington. Very fascinating about the number of tribes that were out there and how they were integrated or not integrated into society, so.
I'm going to tell you what, I'll, I'll finish tonight. I've been reading through the presidents, reading two or three biographies of each president, up to the 10th, which is John Tyler. And tonight, I'll finish John Tyler, the Accidental President. Didn't know much about him at all. Fascinating, really fascinating guy.
Can you give us one fact about him? Can you give us one fact about him?
Did you know that the 10th president of the United States concluded an agreement with Hawaii and China? You know, it's really pretty amazing when you think of what travel was like. But there were international relationships and an actual treaty with China and an agreement on how Hawaii would kind of come under the protection of the United States so that Great Britain didn't grab it as a nice stopping off point between portions of the world.
Back when they still had the Queen, right?
Hawaii or Great Britain?
That was...
Hawaii.
King Kamehameha.
It was a king, yeah.
Yeah.
And his dog.
Yep, yep. Aloha. Book'em, Dano, I guess.
Well, I finished a couple of books recently. The Red Barn, Aladdin, and something about a sparkly pumpkin, so. Top reads.
And you did that all in one night, right?
In about 15 minutes, so, yeah. I'm impressive.
I have to say that I'm with Inga's babysitting grandpa. For the handbook.
And I can't think of the title of it, but it's, it's by David Baldacci, and it's the new one out, but I'm just about done.
Ashley, Bill, any help for Teresa?
Can you draw it?
But anyway, I love his books.
Was it, so it was like fiction, romance?
Fiction, mystery.
You recommend it?
Oh, yes.
We should have a book list, the council recommended reading. Jerry?
Well...
Highlights?
I haven't really read a book for myself since I graduated last year, but...
So it was a textbook?
Yeah, I, I read Frosty the Snowman the other day. I don't know why I should keep on, I kept wanting me to read it. I don't, yeah, so, I'll do that.
Dan, the market reports, is that it?
Everyday Millionaire by Chris Hogan, and I'm halfway through The Proximity Principle by Ken Coleman.
On the financial list, books.
One career.
Oh, okay. And when will you reach it? Oh, maybe he already reached it. See, there's advantages. You can become a millionaire working for government.
The top, the top three professions were engineers, accountants, and schoolteachers. And one-third of the 10,000 millionaires they surveyed never had household income greater than $100,000. And they pay off their house in 10.8 years.
Who else do we have left? The two on the end? The two radicals?
Wisconsin Horticultural Pesticide Applicators book. So, hard to beat that. Or Curious George and Go Dog Go, so.
Well, the last one I can remember for a title, because again, you start reading them and they're interesting, but you don't remember the titles. But that's one I remember is, was recent. It was Tinker, Taylor, Soldier, Spy by John LeCarr, LeCarr, I think. So that was interesting.
The audience, what is it? What are our journalists reading today? And our restaurateurs?
Interestingly enough, I've started all the president's men about a dozen times. I just, I just finished the first book in the Young Thrones.
Nice. Did you do all the Harry Potter, too?
Never watched or read Harry Potter.
Oh, don't come back till you start reading Harry Potter. I think that's like a prerequisite. The Milton Courier is reading what? It is, and it's, I did a book club where we read The Course in Miracles. I don't remember a lot of it, but I still have the book. There's not much left of it from all the reading we did, so, good for you. Mike? Farming 101? I don't know.
I just got to do his next year, so.
The pesticide? Start now?
I'm a babysitter grandma.
Oh, nice.
I have a lot of the babies, I think I called it Three Grand, Five Grand. A lot of that type of reading.
Good for you. I can't wait to do that kind of reading.
Do color, too?
Color change, yeah, well...
Such a great excuse to play with Legos, too. Nobody can say anything about it.
All right, we got everybody captured? Excellent. Oh, you have to choose somebody to do team building for whenever we meet, oh, June 18th? June 18th.
Ryan has, and he's asking, just Lynda and Teresa's for our council members.
Council members. Let's get the council out of the way. Okay, so our next meeting will be June 18th, 2019. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned. Jerry is now an elder of the council and doesn't get to make the motion anymore.